I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Brings us to item one minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on June 18th, 2024.
I move approval.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two claims, two A, approval of the claims processed through June 25th, 2024.
Move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B, approval of the claims including billings for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided Nebraska revised statute 23-135. The University of Nebraska dated June 24th, 2024 for a total of $1,701.03.
Move approval.
Second?
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three. Item three is our consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner but a member of the public without prior notice unless there is an exception. These items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts. One, C-23-0948 with Inti Connect Incorporated doing business as Inti Connects for physical access and control system equipment services. C-22-0697 with Alfred Benish and Company for professional engineering services related to replacing County Bridge F-181. C-24-0310 with All Makes Office Equipment Company of Lincoln for furniture fixtures and equipment for the Civil Protective Custody Center. And B for change order four to county contract C-23-0983 with Yoast Excavation to extend the project to September 30th, 2025.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item four, our public hearing, amending appropriations for the county-city property management funds. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. All right. Good morning.
I will now open the public hearing for the county-city property management funds.
It'll keep you.
Take it away, Dennis.
Okay. Good morning. Dennis Meyer, Lancaster County Budget Fiscal Officer. Today, you know, we're kind of in our last week of our fiscal year. So today's public hearing is really to amend what I call Fund 65, which is really the county-city property management fund. Most people would think of it as really kind of, when we think of PBC, we think of employees, their property management fund is where salaries and benefits come from. This amendment today is really just to increase our spending authority by $200,000, and it's really to cover costs that will take place the remaining of this fiscal year. So when we set up the budget, we really just kind of shorted the spending authority by this $200,000. It does not affect property tax. It doesn't do any of that. All that this does is increases the spending authority for that one fund.
Yeah. Any discussion? Any questions for Dennis? Okay. Is there anyone here to testify in favor of this change? Is there anyone here to testify in opposition to this change? Is there anyone here to testify in a neutral capacity on the appropriation for the county-city property management funds? Okay. Saying none, we will close the public hearing.
Brings us to item five, new business, five A, resolution of the matter of supplementing appropriations for the previously adopted budget for the county-city property managed fund in the amount of $200,000.
So this resolution is just kind of doing that $200,000 amendment. We'll then file the amended budget with the state auditor, with the county clerk, and this will just clean this piece of it, of the budget up before the end of the fiscal year.
Is this likely the last one for this current?
Yeah. For fund, for the different funds that we have, we have to do the public hearing and then we have to amend. Right after this is the last one to clean up the general fund. So today's two items are really just kind of setting us up, getting the budget where it needs to be, and then fiscal year ends this coming week.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five B, a resolution in the matter of transferring appropriations from the general fund miscellaneous budget to various general fund agencies. The amount to be transferred is $550,838.
Okay. So this resolution is cleaning up the rest of the general fund. So as long as it's within the general fund, we're not really setting our general fund budget over what it was. We're just kind of transferring between departments. This is what this resolution's doing. We've done a couple this year as we've gone through the process that needed to be cleaned up. These are the remaining ones that still just need to be tweaked a little bit, and therefore we'll have them within the allowable budget after that. You know, a couple of the bigger items, you know, we're still dealing with those court-appointed fees over in the county court. So we're amending that one here, and then we've just got a few other items as we kind of go down there, but this should clean the general fund up.
Appreciate that.
I move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item five C, resolution in the matter of amending the open meetings policy for the Lancaster County Board of County Commissioners, the Lancaster County Board of Equalization, Lancaster County Board of Corrections, and all Lancaster County task forces and advisory committees. Resolution includes provisions in response to LB 43, which becomes effective July 18th, 2024.
Move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five D, a resolution in the matter of accepting maintenance responsibilities for certain roads and streets located within the Salt Creek Reserve and Salt Creek Reserve First Edition.
Good morning. John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering. This is a request by Travis Beul. He's the developer in that area for the county to take over maintenance in Salt Creek Reserve and Salt Creek Reserve First Edition. It's an addition that's about a mile west of Hickman. The roads there are asphalt. They're in really good shape. We went out, did our inspections. They've corrected a few items which they needed to do, so they have met all the requirements as specified by the county.
Aren't there no longer requirements on?
These are subdivisions that are grandfathered in. So these are some of the ones that aren't new. So we do have requirements as far as shapes of the roads, filling in cracks, mailboxes, you know, concrete mailboxes are always an issue. In this case, their main issues were some of the erosion problems that they had along the edges of the road or on the ditches, and they have taken care of all those.
Appreciate you getting them up to standards before we do this. I would move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Looking to our engineers, is there any way out of this? On this, I know you and I are perfectly aligned. Like, I'll vote, if you say there's no way out of it, I'll vote for it, and we'll just move on with our day. It'll be fine.
So Commissioner Flowerday, you're probably asking an engineer a legal question.
Sure.
And the reality is, is this document maintenance is spelled out in the plat, right? With our standards, and so there really, there really isn't any way out of it. And this just is where we're at.
I'm going to hold it up. All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to five E, resolution for counts 406691 and 406692 with Exchange Bank designating Rachel Garver, Christian Anderson, and Amy Wilson as authorized agents for the county.
This is allowing us to do, open up two CDs with Exchange Bank.
Is this the NPAET thing?
No. That's next.
Okay. So, hey, look at that, right there on the agenda. You're right.
Could you say that again, Rachel? I didn't quite.
This is agreements with Exchange Bank, and it allows us to have, it's two different CDs.
Okay. I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five F, participation in the Nebraska Public Agency Investment Trust. There are four items, the enabling resolution, the new account application form, deactivating existing authorized individuals, and activating new authorized individuals.
Rachel Garver, Lancaster County Treasurer. Let me just say a little bit about NPAET. It was created almost 30 years ago. There were three founding sponsors. NACO was one of them, the Nebraska Association of Resource Districts, and the Nebraska Rule Electric Association were the other two. And there are currently six other sponsors, Metropolitan Area Planning Agency, the Nebraska Community College Association, the Nebraska State Irrigation Association, the Nebraska State Volunteer Firefighters Association, Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District, and the Panhandle Area Development District. The sponsors are partly responsible for promoting the fund and informing their participants about the benefits and services that are available. They, there are 13 members for the NPAET board, and NACO has six of those members. Four are county treasurers and two are supervisors or commissioners. The sponsors receive one basis point of the fund for providing board members to contracting with service providers and use the offsetting cost and training for their members. I know that the NACO has an online site that, as treasurers, we all have a free membership to go in and use the training that is provided by NACO. It not only has all the, from our meetings, they're all the, the different workshops, all the different presentations are videotaped, and we can go back and we can look at those, or if you miss going, you can go in and look at them. And there is some other training in there. Some of them, of the training is something that we can do for the requirement that we have with the state, that we have to have eight hours of training every year to be in good standing as a treasurer. Then there's other management-type training opportunities in there and different types of software training, which to me is really beneficial. I'm really glad to see it. It's somewhat similar to what IS has provided for us, only it's more related, there's more treasure stuff related.
I mean, I'm appreciative that NACO offers that training. That's also sort of the reason they exist. I feel funny about NACO getting a basis point on our investment. That doesn't feel good to me as a steward of taxpayer dollars. That feels weird. It equally feels weird that NREA is getting it, that the state, like, it just, this is a, like, I don't have any real problem with NPAET, and if you want to, we do our own thing. Like, what you're proposing is not a bad idea. Can we keep the money?
Well, what I want to say is, it, I too see what you're saying about it being, but I do know that.
It's like 30, 40 grand, right? I mean, it's not.
Well, NPAET, they paid out, let's see, for the years ending June 30th, '23 and '22, NPAET paid $43,812, and then in '22, $29,185. But what was waived, because a lot of the fees were waived, was $394,266 in 2023, and $321,039 in '22. So not all the fees were given out. So a lot of them were waived.
I mean, who would have paid that? The counties?
No. It's a percent of the money.
Oh, I get what you're saying.
It's a percent of the money that is in there being invested by the counties, but the rate of return back to us right now for a daily rate is 5.31. A few weeks ago, I could get a one-year certificate for over 5%. I can't get a one-year certificate right now for over 5% because a lot of, there's a lot of anxiety about what's going to happen in November, and I understand it better after reading an article that summarized what Moody's Analytics reported on. It, there's too much unknown as to what's going to happen in November. And so if I could get 5% for a year, I wanted to jump on it, and I couldn't because I had to overcome this little hurdle here of getting approval to use NPAET. I don't know what we can get today. I didn't want to call and ask until after I was sure I could go with it so that I can say, lock us in.
I don't mind giving you the authority to do this, and if it's a good investment, it's a good investment. I just, I just wish that we were getting the money.
Yeah. Well, we'll get the higher, we'll get the good rate, and I'm only going to go with them if it's a good rate.
No, and I don't have any doubt about that. I'm not, I'm not worried about how you're going to handle it. I'm just, I just want that basis point returned to us and not to NACO and not NREA and not everything else.
I understand.
Just to be clear, I mean, everybody, all the different groups I'm on, RTSD and the other boards, all give great kudos to the county treasurer's office for the investments and return. So this is just one more tool. The point, the point aside that, like, some of the structure, the point aside, this is one more tool for the treasurer.
Commissioner Amundson?
Yeah. And I do have a question in terms of what the historical rate has been. Can you give that as far as NPAET, how it compares with other investments?
Okay. Several years ago, before COVID, the rate wasn't quite as high as I could get, and so I didn't push it because the rate wasn't, it was okay, but it wasn't worth coming here and talking about it because I wasn't sure if I would be going with it. The rate during COVID and when we were having lean rates was equal to where the rates were. And steadily, as we have been coming out and the economy has been getting better and everything, they have been keeping up and just been either at or even slightly better than what I could get at the banks that we do business with.
I just was wondering if it wasn't an anomaly or what.
I, I think there have been some, well, there was a change in who they used to work with. They went from working with a subsidiary of Union Bank to the PMA, and I think that changed a little bit. Moving probably disrupted some things, but I think they've been slowly working at trying to give some of the best rates. What the anomalies are, are some of our banks will give us a really high rate because they're requiring money at that point in time, and so they will pay more than anybody else. Those anomalies happen, and I try to take advantage of those if we have the money available.
I'm going to move approval of this.
I'll second. I appreciate this continued discussion around it and providing that clarity.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Now we know why Rachel did bring this forward earlier. No, that's all part of the process.
All right. Hearing no further discussion. Let's call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five G, a special designated license application for Napizaro LLC for an event at El Rancho Centario on July 4th, 2024.
Good morning. Steve Solario, we're just here to apply for a special designated license application for a 4th of July event.
Tell us a little bit more about your events, or what are you going to be doing?
It's just a family 4th of July event, a little bit outside of Lincoln area. Just trying to make sure we get the proper licenses to do the event properly.
We appreciate you following that. I move approval.
I would like to second that. It's good to see you here in this role, Steve. I was glad to see your name on the application.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks for doing it the right way.
Yep. Thank you.
Five H is the appointment of Ernest E.K. Franks, Director of University Relations, University of Nebraska-Lincoln, to the Visitors Promotion Committee as an ex-official member representing the University of Nebraska-Lincoln.
Is Mr. Franks here? I don't think so. Okay. I move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five I, an agreement with Hub Investment Advisors Incorporated to assist the county in procuring a third-party administrator for the county's health reimbursement arrangement plan. The cost to the county is not to exceed $20,000.
Move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five J, the recommendations from the Joint Budget Committee, JBC, for the 2024-2025 JBC funding.
Good morning. I'm Leslie Arons with Lincoln Lancaster County Human Services. The allocation recommendations for JBC were provided to you. I am here regarding a formal vote for these financial distributions.
Please to say that this particular JBC meeting was only three hours long. It has been six in the past, so this one was practically breezy.
If only there were more money. These were some difficult decisions to make, to be sure.
We move approval.
Should we, yeah. Sorry. Finish, it, there's a motion on the floor. Then I'll bring up my, my question. Is there a second?
I will second.
There's a motion and a second. I think we have some, some conflicts in this.
Oh, okay.
So we should break out certain votes.
Okay.
Like, I know Cedars, where my wife works, is one of the entities on this list. I forget what other possible conflicts there might be on this one, so I think we should break it out.
Okay.
If no one minds that. Does anybody, just looking at the list, does anybody see any conflicts for themselves? For me, it's Cedars on the JBC list.
I am, I am looking hard, and I'm not seeing any unless I'm reading past them.
The Mediation Center's on.
Okay. So we'll break out the vote for Cedars, we'll break out the vote for the Mediation Center. Any others? Okay. Would, Commissioner Vest, would you accept a friendly amendment to move approval except for Cedars and the Mediation Center? We'll do those separately.
Yeah. Yes, and I would second.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I would move approval of the JBC funding for Cedars.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Oh, abstain. The whole reason, the whole reason I did that, and abstain. My vote is abstained.
Thank you. That passes with three yeses and one abstention.
One awkward goofy abstention.
I would move approval of the JBC funding to the Mediation Center.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Well, in my spirit, I'm voting yes officially. I abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three yeses, one abstention.
And then I think we probably want to do the same thing for the JJPF funds, which are next, right?
Commissioner, that brings us to five K, the recommendations from the JBC for the 2024-2025 Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund, JGPF funding.
Is this the same list or is this different?
It is a different list.
Yeah, it's a different list.
Different monies.
Yeah, this is the Juvenile Justice.
So Cedars, oh, no, that's Center for People. Cedars Youth is on here again.
Yep. I need to break out Cedars and Rabble Mill.
And we need to pull El Centro from this list as well as the Indian Center.
Okay, I'm making a list.
And the Mediation Center.
El Centro, Indian Center?
Yep.
Indian Center.
And the mediation center is on this list.
Mediation and Rabble Mill.
And Cedars.
I've got five of them. Is that correct? Rabble, Cedars, El Centro, Indian, and mediation.
That feels right.
And the reason we're pulling these off, just for those that are watching, is because some of us serve on those boards or have an affiliation with those organizations.
Right, so I would make a motion that we approve this budget with the exception of removing the mediation center, El Centro, the Indian Center, the Rabble Mill, and the Cedars Youth Services.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I would make a, and I guess we have, we do Rabble Mill and Cedars together. So I would make a motion that we approve Rabble Mill and Cedars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Abstain.
Motion carries, three yeses with an abstention?
I would move that we approve El Centro and the Indian Center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Abstain.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero with an abstention?
I would move approval of the funds for the mediation center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Abstain.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero with an abstention?
We just want to say thank you to Commissioner Yocum and Commissioner Flouride for participating in the JBC committee, as well as a thank you to all commissioners for your continued support of human services. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioners, that brings us to five L, the interlocal agreement with Buffalo County for the housing of juvenile offenders at the Youth Services Center at a rate of $334 per day.
Move approval.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners.
I'll take a second.
Oh, Brad.
Anything good to say?
I think Dodge and Adams were, they're gonna be next week. Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Well, the process is continuing.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we appreciate your efforts.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five M is the agreement with Elizabeth Kester for provision of psychoeducational classes to participants in the Lancaster County pretrial diversion programs. The cost to the county shall not exceed $300 per week for a one-year term.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five N, an agreement with Switman Esper Enterprises Incorporated for sandblasting services at the Wash Bay located at 444 Cherry Creek Road, Lincoln. The cost to the county is $1,505.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, and I have Ryan Shaw with me, who's our facilities manager today. This is for sandblasting the columns in the Wash Bay so that we can do a better inspection, figure out how to repair them. I hope to have this here a lot sooner, but we had some issues with their insurance. And of course, in this case, we want to make sure these guys are insured before they do this.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five O, contract with Lobato Construction LLC for replacement of county bridge C253. Cost to the county is not to exceed $547,573.30.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, uh, this bridge is located on Little Salt, uh, correction, Branch Oak Road at the location shown on the exhibit. I've put on the overhead. We are excited to get going. This will be another press brake folded tub girder bridge. And so we're looking forward to the accelerated construction process of that. We did have eight bidders for this project.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to five P, contract with Subsurface Incorporated to provide CIPP culvert liners countywide. The cost to the county is not to exceed $405,220.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, this is our culvert lining maintenance project. And I just want to note that in many cases, uh, we use this when it's a cheaper solution than replacing the pipe. Uh, this allows us to do three or four of these a day, actually. So we're not doing open cut. We're not, uh, stopping traffic. Um, it is, it is not a cheap process, but it is a process that allows us to keep the resiliency of our county roads.
Move approval.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five Q, recommendations from purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to warrant and execute the following purchase orders to AFI LLC, doing business as Anderson Ford Lincoln. The first is for two 2024 or newer Ford 550 XLT crew cab chases in a total amount of $151,410. The second one is for 2024 or newer Ford 450 crew cab chases in the total amount of $321 and $320.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, the first two trucks on this list would replace our mechanics trucks, in particular, heavy mechanics. They have their tools with them, uh, in a truck, and they go out to the site if we get somebody that breaks down. I believe that both of these trucks, well, I believe that all six of these trucks that we're replacing today have somewhere around 190,000 miles on them. Average, so, and then I'll say, uh, that's county miles. And we're sadly not gentle. Those aren't highway miles, those are county miles. And so, uh, in order to keep the resilience of our fleet up, we need to, to replace these. The second group of four trucks, uh, you're gonna see F450s, uh, which are a little bigger truck. Uh, we have trailers now, in particular, for our maintenance crews, now that we're aggressively maintaining our infrastructure. If we're gonna put a, um, uh, skid steer, right?
Compact track loader and attachments.
Compact track loader and attachments on, uh, on, on the trailer and pull it, we need a little bigger truck to stay in compliance with that.
We've talked about the cost of not replacing vehicles, you know, and 190,000 is gotta be close to the point where it starts to cost us regularly to keep it on the road.
Commissioner Vest, they're, they're used up.
I was gonna say, but, I mean, if, if we were looking at depreciation schedules on these, I guarantee you we're past that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sometimes when we put them up for auction, it is a little shocking that people are still willing to, uh, pay money for them. And I'll say, we have changed our philosophy. Uh, there was a time when we would, uh, cut steel sheeting and put, put a little piece of steel, uh, in the driver's side. And, and that's, by the way, that's just really not a good place to be. We want to make sure that our workers are safe and that we're meeting resiliency and, and other things, and so that we can get our work done.
Yeah.
I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, does, does the dealership actually have these, or are we gonna be waiting?
We're, we were told four months, right?
Uh, six weeks on, uh, one set of trucks.
I mean, that's, it's a lot better, it's a lot better than the two years we've heard in the past, so like, I'll take it.
I mean, and of course, these are, you know, the more heavy-duty trucks, not the dump trucks. It's that Allison transmission that's really snagging us in the big trucks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five R, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to warrant and execute a purchase order to Hamilton Equipment Incorporated for four 15-foot rotary cutters in the total amount of $112,194.24.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, uh, I'm gonna let Mr. Shaw, uh, speak to the next, uh, three or four items here that regard mower attachments.
Ryan Shaw with Lancaster County Engineer. So the first four here are land-pried, uh, 15-foot rotary cutters for highway mowers that we pull behind. Our current fleet is nine years old, so we've well beyond used those up.
And, and, I'm just, I, was that, yeah, okay, good. I just wanted to point out, and Pam, you'll understand this better than I, but these are all recommendations from the purchasing agents. And these are all competitively bid. When we put out our needs, people, we don't just go pick someone and say, okay, will you sell us this equipment?
So for the next three items, Commissioner Vest, you will note that it says Sourcewell Contract. And so that means that we're allowed to piggyback on other people's, uh, low-bid contracts, which is, by the way, by the way, is an awesome process. That's the same process under which we buy a lot of the heavy equipment. And I'm just gonna say, um, I don't, you know, Ryan is, uh, is new to county engineering. He's not new to facilities and fleet management, and so, uh, he can speak to how much easier it is to navigate the Sourcewell process versus us completely specking the equipment that we can review a spec that's already out there and determine whether or not it meets our needs.
Perfect. Thank you. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to five S, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of county engineer to warrant and execute a purchase order to Acres Equipment Solution for four mid-mountain rotary mowers in the total amount of $162,800.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Shaw speak to this one also. Uh, so this price includes the price for removing our old mowers, um, from the equipment and attaching the new mowers. And, and so, uh, you might have saw me give Ryan the hand signals, because I'm always like, is it the side mowers? Or the side mower? Or the back mower? Uh, but this is the side mount mower.
These are the side mowers, so, uh, what Pam was saying there. So this is also another nine-year current fleet with these four mowers for our side mounts. The tractors that supply the power again, they're, they're in really good shape for the amount of hours and years we have on. I think we could probably get another five years out of those power units. Unfortunately, the mowers have also been ran down the side of the road and into everything. And, uh, they have a lot of structural fatigue on them, so that's why we're asking for the replacement of these. These will also include all the hydraulics to update on all those pieces of equipment, so.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to five T, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to warrant and execute a purchase order to Murphy Tractor Equipment for five diamond mowers in the total amount of $196,000.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, uh, once again, because this is mower day, I'm gonna let Mr. Shaw speak, uh, speak to the five diamond mowers.
So some clarification here, Diamond Mowers is the brand name. These are actually for mulchers for the, uh, compact track loaders that we have. So the current fleet that we have now has also got a lot of structural fatigue. It's, they're five-plus years old. They get grounded, pounded into the ground, so this is gonna update that fleet we have there.
So what we do with these is we're now mulching brush and trees in place. This helps us, uh, not take things to the landfill. Uh, we, uh, actually save our mulch, and sometimes we go ahead and use it in the right of way where we did grind the trees and brush down. Uh, sometimes we pick it up and we use it for erosion control on our other sites. And so, um, not only is it environmentally friendly, but it is really, uh, saving us, uh, buying erosion control materials in many cases, so.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five U, a state and local government endetum pursuant to contract C24-0356.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five V, lease agreements with the following pursuant to a memorandum of understanding, C24-0356 with Rico USA Incorporated for print goods and services for the following, Lancaster County Board of Commissioners, the Lancaster County Election Commissioner, Lancaster County Clerk, Lancaster County Treasurer, Lancaster County Engineering Department and Engineer Shop, Lancaster County Sheriff, Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center, Lancaster County Community Corrections, Lancaster County Risk Management, Lancaster County Corrections, Lancaster County Assessor, Register of Deeds, Lancaster County Juvenile Court, Lancaster County Human Services, Lancaster County Adult Probation, Lancaster County Attorney and Child Support, Lancaster County Weed Control Authority, the Lancaster County Youth Services Center, Lancaster County Veteran Services, Lancaster County Public Defender, the Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management, Lancaster County District Court, Nebraska Extension in Lancaster County, Lancaster County Juvenile Probation, Lancaster County Clerk at the District Court, Lancaster County Records and Information Management, and finally Lancaster County Court.
Is that all?
Twenty-six. Well done. I move approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
She had to step.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Commissioners, that brings us to item six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items related to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on items, uh, related to county business that are not on the agenda?
Robert Moore. Excuse me, when the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice, but when the wicked bear rule, the people mourn. The embodiment of justice is a blindfolded person holding balanced scales. The law and the prophets do not allow for scales that are falsely and unjustly balanced. Quoting, "Thou shalt not have in thy bag divers weights, a great and a small." Divers weights are an abomination to the Lord, and a false balance is not good. A false balance is an abomination to the Lord, but a just weight is his delight. The law and the prophets are summed up in two overarching commandments. Love the Lord your God with all your heart, soul, mind, and strength, and love your neighbor as yourself. To do any less is to commit treason against the supreme judge of the universe. Members of this board take satisfaction in thinking themselves duly elected, but you refuse others the satisfaction of simply verifying that so-called election. Your integrity ended right there, if you ever had any. You have made your satisfaction more important and more valuable than your neighbors. You unjustly tipped the scales in your favor. Moreover, you have helped government steal the people's elections. Government is supposed to be by consent of the people. There's only one reason for non-transparent and unverifiable election results. Fraud. Many critical issues are unjustly weighed in the false balance of your non-transparent and unverifiable and fraudulent elections. Constitutions are unjustly ignored because of non-transparent, unverifiable, and fraudulent election results. Basic rights are unjustly denied because of non-transparent, unverifiable, and fraudulent election results. Bad judges are unjustly appointed because of non-transparent, unverifiable, and fraudulent election results. People are sent off to needless and unjust wars to die because of non-transparent, unverifiable, and fraudulent election results. because of non-transparent, unverifiable, and fraudulent election results. Bad people are unjustly allowed into our country because of non-transparent, unverifiable, and fraudulent election results. Citizens are subjected to soaring crime and personal harm, as we saw in the summer of 2020, because of non-transparent, unverifiable, and fraudulent election results. Huge contracts are unjustly won and lost because of non-transparent, unverifiable, and fraudulent election results. Winners and losers in society in general are unjustly chosen because of un, non-transparent, unverifiable, and fraudulent election results. And the guilt for all of this injustice falls on you when you unjustly side with non-transparent and unverifiable election results. God commands and demands better of you. He demands equal weights, equal measures, and equal justice. There's a way that seems right to a man, but the end thereof are the ways of death. Not every one that says, "Lord, Lord shall enter the kingdom of heaven" that he that does the will of the Father in heaven. There is nothing new unto the Son. The majority of mankind corrupt themselves and never do repent. Again, the right, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked bear rule, the people mourn." A lot of people are mourning right now. The Lord's hand is not so short that it cannot, cannot save, neither is His ear so heavy that it cannot hear. A day of reckoning is coming. God's judgment will be just.
Okay, any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Roger Lemke. I live in, uh, northeast Lincoln, 2501 North 74th Street. Uh, I'm here to bring to your attention today the results from a meeting that you held last Thursday. I believe you call it the Staff Meeting. And it was during that meeting where you listened to the recommendations that were made by the Visitors Promotion Committee. Uh, ten applications were made and considered. Out of those ten, seven, you accepted the committee's recommendation. Two of those you increased, one by over, one by 16,000, one by 17,000. One, and really could be the only one that's a, what I would call a new visitor opportunity, you decreased by $29,000. And that's for the State Historical, the Pershing mural, to be installed at Wayuka. I want to point out to you today that the County Visitor Promotion Improvement Fund specifically identifies creating new visitor attractions, which is exactly what this will be. We estimate that over 25,000 visitors will come to see that magnificent position in Wayuka when it's installed around this time next year. I can give you an example of Walk to the Rock at Chimney Rock that the Nebraska State Historical Society, uh, had completed about a year ago. We've gotten, uh, visitors from virtually every European nation to that site. They average over 50 visitors a day. Every county has been represented, and as of about two weeks ago, every state has been represented at that new site now at Chimney Rock. So this is an opportunity for Lincoln that has never existed before. But to really make it all come true, we really do need your help. And we need a better signal here. Uh, rather than a large reduction in funding, we're hoping that you would reconsider the decision and restore the funding that we've, that the committee had previously requested. So that is my request of you this morning, is to go back in a regular council meeting and reconsider the amounts and reconsider, uh, providing the 39,000 that the committee recommended to you, uh, last week at the staff meeting. Are there any questions for me?
It, definitionally, in public comment, we try to not make it a back and forth. This is your opportunity to talk to the board. Um, but if you want to talk with Commissioners, I'm sure people would stick around afterwards.
Okay, that'll be fine, Sean. Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good morning. So I wanted to also bring up the same item that I brought up last week about your approving the, uh, claims process through June 25th. That's through the end of today. So it's like you're giving a blank check, you know, to be able to pay for expenditures. I don't know, that seems unreal to me. But if that's your philosophy, the way you do things, then I guess that's the way it continues. And it looks like that's the same type of thing you do with the election things that we keep asking for. We keep asking for things, but no, you feel like everything is okay. You're being told everything's all right, so you'll just approve it and we'll move forward. I think you need to take a look at, you know, what needs to be done to make changes. We need your help to do it. That's why you were elected, to be up here, to help us. We keep crying out to you. You're not hearing.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, saying no other members of the public, uh, please proceed.
Announcements, Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, June 27th, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024, at 9 a.m. with the Board of Equalization immediately falling in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Meeting is broadcast live on LAK TV. LAK TV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LAK TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item Eight is adjourned.
We adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?[1769.60]